Good afternoon, everyone. So this is a meeting of the Auburn School Committee being held remotely via Zoom due to the ongoing pandemic and stay-at-home orders. So in attendance today, we have Mr. George Scobie, this is Jessie Harrington, Dr. Megan McCrillis, this is Dorothy Kaufman, this is Gail Holloway, Dr. Beth Chamberlain, Assistant Superintendent, this is Wares Bicky, Business Manager, and Elaine Zottner, Recording Secretary, as well as Mr. Chris Hugo, who is taping this meeting. So Mr. Hugo, as noted, is recording the meeting. Doesn't appear that there's anyone else recording the meeting. So with that, I've called the meeting to order at 2:01 PM. So the, there are no citizens' comments to comment. So the first order of business is reorganization of the committee. So I will open it up for nominations for Chairperson of the Auburn School Committee.
I will make a motion to appoint George Scobie as Chairperson of the school committee for the time period May 26, 2020 through May 19, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so a second for Megan McCrillis. Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie?
Yes.
Okay, so it is unanimous. Congratulations, George. I will turn the meeting back over to you.
That's all you have.
All right. First of all, thank you very much. Thanks for your continued support. I think this is the first time in the history of school committee meetings that there wasn't some type of discussion about who was going to be Chairperson. I know with this particular group, we've at least had one or two people, you know, have some chatter about it. But with all that's going on with the pandemic, honestly, there hasn't been one single conversation about this. So I appreciate you thinking of it on your own. And Gail, thanks for nominating me. And thanks to the rest of the committee for supporting me. It's great. Dr. Renell, thanks for opening up the meeting. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion for Chairperson, Vice Chair of the School Committee.
I will make a motion to appoint Jessie Harrington as Vice Chair of the School Committee from May 26, 2020 through May 19, 2021.
Do I have a second?
I can.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Gail. I appreciate it. And like George said, we haven't had any conversations about this. So kind of, I'm glad everyone's working cohesively, even though we're not all together. So, thank you.
Yeah, and not having the conversations that we usually do before or after meetings, you know, here and there. It's, it's a, but we're still doing what we need to do to get by. All right, roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Congratulations, Mrs. Harrington.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. And I'd like to thank both of you for continuing the leadership you've done, and especially through these difficult times. I think status quo is best right now. Thank you.
I second that.
You guys are gonna make me cry. Very emotional.
Appreciate that. But, but it's with the support of the committee and the entire leadership team, and of course, our wonderful staff at the Auburn Schools that really, really make it fairly easy for us. So thank you to all of them.
Definitely.
And do we have any special recognitions?
Yes, we have. I wanted to bring to the committee's attention that Mr. Casey Hanfield is now officially Dr. Casey Hanfield. He passed his dissertation with Johns Hopkins just this past Wednesday. So he was quite relieved. You could hear the fatigue in his voice when he called to let us know, because I doubt he got much sleep on last Tuesday evening. But, but he is excited and we're proud of him and happy that he's, he's made this accomplishment. So kudos to him.
That's excellent. Congratulations to Dr. Hanfield.
I told him, he's my first student to get a doctorate in education.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. That's great. And a product of the Auburn Schools to boot.
That's right. My class.
I want you a little something, Gail.
Yep, that's it.
Good job, Mrs. Holloway.
Thanks.
Nice work. If it wasn't for your jump start, who knows where he'd be right now.
Oh, I know it. I throw it in ya.
All right. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our last school committee meeting, whenever that may have been. I don't have an actual agenda in front of me.
May 13th.
For the May 13th meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the May 13th, 2020, School Committee.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. And I now will turn it over to Dr. Renell for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to, you know, keep on the fore, and I know we've discussed this before, but the anticipated negative impacts of COVID-19 on the FY '21 budget and likely FY '22, perhaps too. So I had included in there an article, you know, for you to read. But what I can state to you is, as I noted in the Superintendent's memo, that while I do anticipate that there are challenging times ahead for, we're in challenging times right now, but I think financially in the coming year or so, I have great confidence in the team that's in place that includes all of you here, the administrators and teachers and support staff back in our buildings, that everyone will do the very best they can to make sure that our students are supported in the best way possible. So we continue as a leadership team to look at different scenarios of what that may look like. You did pass that resolution that we sent off, really encouraging the federal government to step up and give additional funds for education because it is, it is truly, truly needed. I will share with all of you a link regarding the HEROES Act, which, as I think I shared with you, has been passed through the House and has not been taken up in the Senate, at least to date. This is down in DC. But if you are so inclined, we will share with you the email addresses for you to send to our state, well, to our federal legislators, really, are the ones encouraging them to really give this due consideration to get it passed. Because, you know, with our students coming back, our students always need us. And kids, as we know, thrive on consistency and routines and having appropriate support in place for them. Many of our kids returning after this extended school closure are gonna need all of that support and then some. So to come back and have, you know, less staff than they left in positions would just add, I think, an extra burden to the whole situation, most notably for the kids and things. So we're working with the town to see what we can come up with. But until state budget numbers are known, which will be after my departure, it will not be at least until July. And some say that may actually be a bit of an aggressive timeline for the state to have their budget out. So it's, we're gonna have all of the scenarios ready so that way, when it is time to make decisions, that you'll have all of the best information available, available to do that. Some of the, you know, things, just kind of slipping into the next section, scheduling some additional school committee meetings to be added. So, you know, as we look to this budget and the changing dynamics, where we have another call with the Commissioner tomorrow to hopefully get some more information regarding summer school planning. Hope to hear from the Governor soon regarding a potential return to school and when that may be and what it may look like. But we are, everything is on the table, whether a potentially non-renewal of non-PTS staff members, those without professional teacher status. And that's really been recommended by the Superintendent's Association to give flexibility to districts to make decisions when they have the information available. But everything is on the table that we're looking at. And, but what I can't, can't stress enough, but we will continue to make decisions based on the answer to that question, which we always ask is, how is this gonna impact students and their achievement? So that's really our goal. So we hope to, when we meet next week, have some specific scenarios just for you to start to think about. Nothing needs to be voted on. What I am pleased to share is the town meeting is intended to take place a week from tonight. It is, we got word from the town hall, we had been in communications with them last week on how to set it up safely. It will be on the football field. Town meeting members were, have been called all last week to try to secure a quorum. The social distancing, people will need to wear masks. All of those guidelines will still be in place. And for those who may not be comfortable getting out of their vehicles to go to the football field itself, will be able to stay in their cars and secluded because through the, the radio station that some of you may remember years ago, there's an antenna on the roof of Auburn High. There is a, a local radio station, so it would be able to be played through that, almost like being at the drive-in, but it'll be a town meeting. So, and it's scheduled for 6 o'clock on the second. We got word about that today, too. So we'll make sure to get that all out to you via email.
Um, through the chair. I know last week I talked that I would be okay with not going. I think in light of things, I would like to be there just to show the support of the schools at the meeting.
Okay, that sounds great. So to that end, about adding in two additional school committee meetings, it is my recommendation that we add June 3rd, which would be next Wednesday, since town meeting is on Tuesday, and then two weeks later on the 17th at 2:00. If you're in agreement and vote in support of that, what we would do is if we don't need them, we can certainly cancel them, but easier to get them on the books now and at least have them available to us.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we add two more school committee meetings, June 3rd and June 17th, both at 2:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote.
Great. The next item, as noted in here, Commissioner Riley has established a return-to-school working group. And they actually began their work on May 7th. So noted in the memo. So what the plan is working, what they're working on and hope to include in the plan will be guidance regarding physical and virtual learning environments, teaching and learning, operations and business services, and behavioral health and social and emotional learning. So while we await the report actually from this group and again, word from the Governor regarding a return to school, it is my recommendation, and I spoke with leadership team about this today, that we establish a local return-to-school working group. Obviously, we will take guidance from the Governor and the Commissioner regarding this. But I anticipate that there may be some local decisions that may need to be made. So with Casey taking the helm relatively quickly, I've asked him to chair this group because I anticipate that this work may be able to get started in the next couple of weeks. But I think more realistically, much of the work probably can't happen in earnest until we get some guidance from the state. I think you can have some preliminary discussions. As I mentioned to him and the leadership, I think it would make sense to have representatives of all of the different groups in the Auburn Public Schools so everybody has a voice at the table. And I think, too, that having a representative or two max from the school committee, I think, would make good sense for this as well. Just have a, a group of people that are just putting on the table any potential issues or ideas because until you can identify the issues, you can't identify the solutions. So I open that up to the group. And if there is someone who may be interested in doing, serving on that, perhaps you can discuss it and decide today.
I would be interested, but I mean, if there's, if there are other people chomping at the bit dying to be on it, then I would.
I would be interested through the chair as well. I think with my background, it would be helpful.
Definitely.
Definitely.
I agree. I mean, I'd also, I'm interested in being on as well, but if you two wanna do it.
So it's, decision of the committee that you, you can only have two people on it? Otherwise, you constitute some form. So that, that really is a decision for you all to make.
Do we know how often they're going to meet?
You know, I, I anticipate it would be done remotely. And I would anticipate that perhaps once it gets up and running, it could be, you know, maybe for an hour or so on a weekly basis. We have been collecting, you know, there's an awful lot of articles out there now that are being written about kind of taking guidance from some of the countries that are a little bit ahead of us in terms of the timing of when the pandemic hit and where they are in their, I guess we'll call it the recovery phase of it. So it, it may, may start off, you know, once a week or so. And, but then I anticipate there may even be some small groups that do breakouts, but maybe then meeting a couple times a month. And it's, it's going to depend, the urgency around it, depending on what we hear from the Governor. Because if word is that we're returning in September, I would anticipate there'd be more meetings pretty regularly just because it's gonna be here before we know it. If there's a determination that it's gonna be some date later than that, there may not be as much urgency around it.
Well, I would agree that with Meg's health background, I think she'd be a great candidate. So I would entertain a motion to have Meg be the first representative on that committee. And.
Thank you.
And then from there, I don't know. I would, maybe Mrs. Kaufman and Mrs. Harrington can have a conversation. We, we could probably follow up next week and determine which of the two would like to step forward.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
That sound good. We don't need, we don't need to deliberate right now. Maybe you guys could talk a little bit on the side and decide. Maybe give it some more thought. Right, Dr. Renell, we could do this next week?
Absolutely, yes.
All right.
All right. So I would entertain that motion for Dr. McCrillis to be part of that committee.
I'll make the motion that Dr. McCrillis should be part of the committee to discuss the school reopenings.
Do I have a second?
I can.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to add a comment that I think this is wonderful, that we're doing it on the local level. Because I read through Commissioner Riley's list of people he was getting information from, and I didn't think any of them really applied to our level of education. I mean, I saw charter schools, regional schools, vocational schools, but I didn't see anyone really representing the K to 12 system like we have, other than maybe one superintendent. So I think this is great, that we're gonna have our own input.
I agree, Gail.
Definitely.
Any other? Okay, roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes, and thank you, Meg.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to bring recognition, something that we add on to the agenda on an annual basis. You know, as we know and reference regularly in the district, the successes that we continue to have, this in service to our students is really all about the team effort. And everybody is a part of that team. So just want to recognize, and we did recognitions, our Administrative Assistance Day was April 20, or the Administrative Assistance Day was April 22nd. School Nutrition Hero Day was May 1st. Teacher Appreciation Week was the 4th of May to the 8th. And then School Nurses Day was May 6th. So I thank all of them and the other team members who, whose group is not listed here because it truly is a, a team effort.
I would also like to thank, I'm sorry. I'd also like to thank our entire staff. I had some kind words at the beginning of the meeting, but really, throughout all of this, the entire staff is just doing an amazing, an amazing job. And, and I know sometimes the, the public has misinformation or, or at least misunderstands exactly what, what it's all about, what we put, what everyone's putting into this. And, and the fact that they would really like to be in the schools and with the children. And in no way, shape, or form is this any type of vacation. It's stressful. Everyone's working harder. And I just haven't heard too many complaints, either from the school side, the district side. I haven't heard, heard too many complaints recently from the parents or the residents. So I just think everyone's doing a great job. So I agree with you and thanks to them. Thanks to all of you.
Great. The next item, the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative, the quarterly report from January to March is included. So I would ask that you accept that as noted.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative third quarter report for the period of January to March of 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Thank you.
And then finally, normally at this time of year, we would have brought to you an update to the strategic plan. Quite honestly, with the amount of work and expectations that we have on all of our staff now, I didn't think it, it was appropriate based on the fact that we've made considerable progress and work continues on that as well. But I know that Mr. Hanfield will likely, he'll set a schedule on his own, but I'm sure he'll provide you an update at an appropriate time, likely in the fall at some point.
Great. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So we're really excited to share with you, as you may recall, one of the events right after we had announced the school closing that needed to be canceled, among many, that student recognition ones in particular. The National Honor Society Induction Ceremony, ceremony at Auburn High had to be canceled at the time, back on March 19th. So they have scheduled a virtual induction ceremony, scheduled for this Thursday at 4:00. If you have not yet received an invitation, we will make sure that you do. And as they do annually, they have a, an alum comes back and speaks to the students. And this year's will be Elise Kavanaugh, who I had Elise as a student when I was a principal at Bryn Mawr School and just a wonderful young woman. So I'm excited to hear what she has to say as the keynote speaker. So excited that the, the inductees will be able to be recognized in this way because it really is an honor. So if you didn't get a Zoom invitation, we'll make sure that you do get one.
Excellent.
Some good news. And then just a reminder, bus applications are due, but to seek your support. So as you know, last week, we sent out a survey to families after your vote to reduce the rate this year to actually $75. So we've heard back so far from about 255 families and, and some of them obviously have, have multiple children. So far, we have 87 of those 255 who have said the district could keep the $25, with the remaining ones seeking a refund if they'd already paid or an adjustment to next year's to be the 75. So in light of that, there's considerable paperwork that's, that's required. So it is my recommendation that we move the deadline instead of it being Monday, June 1st, that we move it to Friday, June 12th, just to give people a little extra time to pay and us time to make sure that we're processing the paperwork appropriately on our end.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to extend the deadline for bus applications for the 2020, 2021 school year to June 12th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, for once I finally get my paperwork in on time and let's take it.
And now I can hold off just a little bit longer.
What kind of an example are you guys showing?
I know. With all that's going on, it's been tough.
I have a question, Mary Ellen.
Yes.
With so many people have lost their jobs, does that affect that they may be ineligible for some sort of reduced bus rate or something, or?
So if they qualify for free or reduced lunch at the elementary level, then there is no bus fee. So the law states that we, districts are not required to provide transportation for secondary students. So they, they have to purchase the pass for secondary students. But actually, now that I'm saying that, Mrs. Zottner, can you? Or Mrs. Wares Bicky, is that?
Yes. Anybody on free and reduced lunch does not have to pay for a bus pass. Right, those grade level.
Okay, great.
So that would go through all the levels or just up through sixth grade?
Through all the levels.
Oh.
Yeah, through all the levels. If they're free or reduced lunch. So they would need to apply for that, to be free or reduced lunch. And if they're determined to be free or reduced lunch after they've paid, we do refund them.
Okay. So for parents that are, this is a new circumstance for them, this is something they could look into, then?
Absolutely. They can contact the school and we can help them with that process, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
I think she dropped. I don't see her.
She might have fallen off the deck.
I hope she didn't fall off.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll go forward. Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Thank you. And moving on to new business.
So I wanted to share with you, so I'm happy. At this time of year, I would normally prepare my self-evaluation and you would go through the process of evaluating. But with guidance from the Commissioner of Education, because school's last day in session was officially March 12th, we worked with the AEA and came to an agreement that for individuals who were with us last school year, their same rating would carry over the summative rating for June of '20. For those individuals who are new to us this year, whatever their rating was at the formative stage, which is the mid-year of their first year, that would carry as their summative rating in, in June of '20. And they've agreed to that. So we're gonna be inputting that data. So I offer it to you. It's really a decision of the committee. If you want me to put together my self-evaluation and then you would need to evaluate me, or if you simply want to carry forward the same ratings from, from last year. That's entirely up to you.
I have a comment on that. I think you've done more than enough this year without having to worry about an evaluation. I think last year's is just fine.
My, my only concern right now is with Mrs. Kaufman dropped from the meeting, that maybe we, can we push this off till next week? Or maybe if she pops back in, we could do it at the end of the meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
That's okay with the committee?
Yes, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
But I, I would agree with, with Gail. But we'll get into that discussion, you know, when, when the time comes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move on to teaching and learning.
Hey, everyone. Nice to see all of you.
Nice to see you.
So just a little bit of an update. As you know, we've been working on the power standards now from Commissioner Riley's recommenda, recommendations related to what children should be focused on during this remote learning time. And so teachers have been working to build those up. I know that there are a lot more small groups happening now. Some children are getting some individual support when they really need it. But I think the staff's doing a tremendous job with outreach and getting, you know, getting learning to our students. So there's a lot to be proud of there. We are right now talking about report cards, which will be here shortly. High school and middle school, because of the way the platform works, that's pretty straightforward. They'll be given credit or no credit. At the elementary level, we At the elementary level, we have the standards-based report card. Um, so we're working with the um principals and some of the teachers to see what's the best way to kind of move that forward. Um, and and we're gonna figure that out so that at least we have some kind of wrapping up of the school year for everyone. It's such kind of a rite of passage to get a report card. We feel like it's not something we wanna gloss over um by any means, but it will certainly be different than it has been in the past. Um, we're also working on, um, we're beginning the conversations as Dr. Brunel talked about a reopening plan. But just to begin to think about what are the areas of teaching and learning that are going to be most challenging now as students move on to the next grade level and how might we prepare for that? So at least to begin that conversation around that, along with a really um heavy emphasis on what kind of social and emotional supports are kids gonna need when they come back? And how are we gonna make that happen in a really uh caring environment? Um, so all of that's being discussed right now, along with plans to uh acclimate kids, especially when they're going to a new school, new grade kind of thing, with some tours of different buildings being prepared that can be shared virtually. Um, teachers' profiles to kind of introduce themselves um as a grade level to the incoming students. So at least kids will get a little bit of a taste at this point of what they might see and 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 um experience in the coming year when we do return to school. So every school and grade level's working on that in a little bit of a different way. But we recognize that this transition like none other will be quite different. So trying to get some things in place to make everybody feel uh comfortable about that, while also preparing the staff for a new environment that at this point, we don't quite know what that's going to look like. But at least to have a sense of where kids might be lagging in skills as we prepare for the next year. So that's where we're at right now. Everybody's been great.
Sounds good. Any questions or comments for Dr. Chamberlain?
Sounds like an awful lot of hard work.
I do have to, I have to share a funny story. My son is in an Ekri group and I um he informed me that the teacher that's doing it is good at it, cause she's a real teacher and I'm not. And that's why the group is so good. So they're doing an amazing job.
You can always improve, Meg.
You can always improve. I'm gonna work on this Ekri thing, yes.
That's great.
Well, thank you for that report, Dr. Chamberlain.
Thank you.
There's Ms. Kaufman, welcome back.
Hey, I'm sorry. I don't know what happened, but I changed laptops and seems to be fine, so.
Okay, well, we're glad you're alright.
I thought you fell off the deck.
I really don't know what happened. It was fine. And then it just went blank and it wouldn't let me back. So I don't know. But we're fine on the different laptops, so I may work one.
Alright. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Chamberlain? Dr. Chamberlain, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. And now we move on to everyone's favorite part of the afternoon, uh, business and financial.
Excuse me, George, do you wanna go back to that question now that Doc's here?
Yes. Um, we we could do that, sure.
Alright.
So, um, Ms. Kaufman, we're just gonna back up a little bit. Um, we were, we held off a vote on Dr. Brunel's summative evaluation. Dr. Brunel, could you just give her a very quick uh narrative on that, please?
Sure. So the decision the committee needs to make is if you'd like me to prepare a self-evaluation so that you can evaluate me. Now, the option um that's available, and this was at the commissioner's urging, we did meet with the AEA. And what we agreed to was since school had effectively closed, um, but for remotely on March twelfth, is the ratings that teachers earned as of June twenty nineteen will carry over to June twenty twenty. And for teachers who are new to the district, the rating, which would have been a formative rating that they received mid-year, would carry through um to their summative rating in June. So the decision for the committee is if you want to go through the formal evaluation process for me, uh, it would require me to do my self-evaluation, or if you wanna just take the rating from June of twenty nineteen and carry it forward.
I mean, personally, I'd be comfortable with carrying, with using what we had earlier in the year. Um, unless anyone feels strongly about it. I I mean, I don't know what the risk would be for that if, I mean, unless someone was really trying to or working really hard towards bringing the rating up. And maybe they feel like their um, maybe their efforts aren't accurate accurately reflected in that mid-year review, but.
Um, well, that's, that makes it um you and Mrs. Holloway, um, Dot, and and I would agree with that. So um at this point, I guess um we could put it to the vote. And if um Dr. McCrillis or Ms. Harrington have comments, we could do that under a second. If there's no concern with that, I would entertain um the motion to use Dr. Brunel's. Is that wording in there? I'm sorry.
No, I didn't.
Okay, I I I would entertain a motion to um use Dr. Brunel's summative evaluation from last time for this year's um evaluation.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Um, any discussion, comments?
Uh, I'm in agreement. I think um it's just another thing to add to her plate, which is unnecessary, so.
I would agree with that, yes.
I I would also, yeah, I would I would also agree on this. There's quite enough going on and and um you've done an excellent job as usual, so um we we appreciate that very much and 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 no need to put you through anymore. And I don't know how much better the numbers could have gotten, um, and I don't think they were gonna get any worse. So I think we're right where we need to be anyway.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for us. My pleasure.
Any other comments or questions?
That's your going away gift.
I appreciate it.
One thing to do.
So generous.
Thank you.
During a pandemic, we gotta do what we can do.
Yeah, that's true. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. And now we move on to everyone's favorite part of a pandemic afternoon, business and financial.
Good afternoon, everyone.
I salute you.
Hi. Um, so basically, I I the, in your packet, I provided a year-to-date budget um report uh for your information. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, I do not have a budget transfer for you at this meeting. I will at the next meeting. Um, we continue to monitor the numbers, um, Dr. Brunel and myself and Dr. Chamberlain, we're looking at the budget with Dr. Hamfield as well. So um I will have something for you for the next meeting. But um if you have any questions about the year-to-date, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions or comments?
So, alright, seeing none. So I I'll move on to, I included in your packet a um memo for the um approval of signing on for another three-year lease for the Auburn Middle School for the iPads. Um, in coming to the the end of the three-year period for the lease at the high school, this was our third year, um, we began to look at um next steps for the iPad initiative with the, you know, the leadership team. We began discussing that. Um, and we looked at, we started looking at the middle school because those iPads were purchased as part of the new building project. So um we began to look at that. And we also wanted to look, we started looking at classroom teacher iPads across the district cause many of them have been in use for a number of years and we wanted to make sure that they all stay current. Um, and the great thing is in working with Apple, we found that iPad costs were lower now than in the past years, um, it includes the cases um in the purchase price and there were better financing options available. So we were happy to hear that. Um, and we, um, after, you know, discussions and review, we decided to move forward with replenishing the middle school iPads as well as um staff iPads. By refreshing the inventory at the middle school, um, and the teacher iPads, it'll allow the district to continue repurposing devices throughout the elementary to both upgrade the aging devices at the elementary and increase access to iPads for our students. Um, this also puts the district in line to alternate a replacement program every three years between the high school and the middle school. So and that that would be the decision of the administration and school committee moving forward, but it puts us in a really good space. So I would ask for your support in the form of a motion to sign on for the three-year lease for the Auburn Middle School and teacher iPads.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the new three-year iPad lease agreement for Auburn Middle School and to put in place a replacement program every three years alternating between the high school and middle school.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, through the chair, in terms of the budget, is this gonna, I'm just worried about the budget next year. Is this gonna, you know, kind of make things worse or?
Um, through the chair, the, we have money in the CIP um account to cover some of this that's been already pre-planned for, as well as um this money in the iPad revolving accounts to support this. So we feel that it's a financially responsible move by the district to move forward on this. It's fiscally responsible.
And then through the chair, I would also assert that that might actually put us in a better position if we need to go, if if we have another round of remote learning that we have to do because that, am I correct to assume that this would, we would do as we've done in the past years where we continue to bump one-to-one ratios down farther and farther into the lower and lower grades, so.
Correct.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Yeah, through the chair, um, are we at one-to-one yet in elementary or close to? No.
So grades three to five is one-to-one. Um, and we have at the uh primary school level, I don't know, Dr. Chamberlain or Mrs. Worsbicky, if you remember, the number of carts we have, we're very close, I would say. That would have happened this year, um, the beginning of the year, based on new purchase. Do you recall, Dr. Chamberlain? Are you on mute?
Oh, I believe we were one to two at the elementaries. I thought that that was kind of what we were thinking, but I'll let Dr. Chamberlain speak.
We are, we're one to two, K to two. Um, so you know, two classrooms share a cart and then at three to five, they are one-to-one. They just obviously stay in school.
Okay, good, cause I I know in the fall, they're not gonna want, we we don't want kids sharing stuff, so.
Yeah, there's no way they'd be able to share in the fall, so this might be a good move.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. Thank you.
I thank you all for your support and that's the end of my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we now move on to policies.
So based on the discussion at the May thirteenth meeting, I did bring forward the school choice policy and added in language that I think addressed um the discussion that was had. Uh, if it does, I would ask for a vote in support of that.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the school choice policy, JFBB, um, with the update as amended.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Say, in reading through that, it made sense. And it, it really just seemed like a natural course to to go that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman? Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. Thank you. And do we need an executive session, Dr. Brunel?
We do, please, yes.
I would entertain that motion.
I will make a motion to go into executive session per mass general law, chapter thirty, section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union personnel and namely secretaries, instructional assistants and custodians.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Um, where where would that link be that was not in the actual memo? Is that another email?
It is. It was sent as a separate email and I think I missed the calendar invitation, but I can resend it.
I can send you a screenshot too, George.
Sounds good. I'm sure, I'm sure I can find it. Okay, any other discussion?
We can, we're gonna vote, right?
Yeah, roll call vote, Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. Good afternoon, everyone. See you next time.